Good morning and welcome to the December 2nd, 2020 Sedgwick County Board of County Commission Meeting. I'm Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. We are streaming this morning's meeting on KPTS Channel 8 and on Sedgwick County's Facebook and YouTube channels. Commissioners have Plexiglas barriers between them. Staff are socially distancing in the room and wearing masks. We do have some staff that are in quarantine this morning and will be participating on conference call this morning. On the agenda, we have several meeting minutes, a hearing for the proposed electrical code adoption, a discussion related to the CARES Act, and a legislative platform discussion. So with that busy agenda before us, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Cruz and Commissioners. Good morning.
Thank you, Tanya. Thank you and welcome, everybody, to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commission Meeting. Today is Wednesday, December 2nd. Welcome to everyone that is watching on KPTS, on Facebook, and on YouTube. We'd also like to wish Chairman Meitzner well as he is joining us in this meeting from home via Zoom this morning. Let's call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
And vacation. To be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, sorry. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Hal.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present.
Thank you. Next up, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we did receive some public comments to our inboxes. Do you have any comments or questions around those?
Loosely received and filed.
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hal.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioners, we do have a few community members who would like to speak for a public comment. First up is Shakura Sin Twali. Shakura, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you, Shakura. You're up, please. Good morning. Welcome.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Can you hear me? This is Shakura Sin Twali, and I am a resident, born and raised here in Wichita, Kansas. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you good. Thank you.
Okay, okay, great. I don't know if there's anything else I need to say prior, but I basically, I don't have a big presentation or a five-minute presentation. I basically have a question. I was, you know that it's in regards to police, changes within the police department and county, the sheriff's department or whatever, in regard to, you know, really speaking to the protests that were around all the police shootings and so forth and so on. So I was in another state at the time that the people put forth here in Wichita. I believe I went online and tried to find out, you know, anything that I could find out about, you know, the status of what's going on with the bans of chokeholds and so forth, you know, whatever people have been putting forth. So I went online to try to find out, and so the last thing that I saw was from July 25th. So that's why I say I'm basically just have a question. So the last thing that I was able to find was July 25th, and, you know, the agencies were still reviewing or, you know, discussing or whatever. My question is this. How much longer will it be before we may, the public, you know, the people can hear, you know, what's up in terms of either, you know, the, I disagree with a couple of things on the eight can't wait. If it had chokehold, it said, I'm not looking at it right now because I'm on the phone. I'm not good at doing two or three things at one time with a computer or cellphone. But one of the things that I read, one of the items that I read said that regarding the ban on the chokehold and stranglehold, it said they would be banned if the person was handcuffed. Then I saw another one where it was just ban the choke, you know, ban the chokehold and stranglehold, period. So I'm just, you know, that needs to happen. It, you know, it just needs to be banned. Those are fatal, and I'm not going all into that. We see the history. We see what's going on. And that's my question. And, you know, there were several others, you know, the eight can't wait. There was like eight different points or demands that the people were making. And like I said, I don't have them all in front of me, but I'm just wondering has, what's the status?
Well, thank you for the question. Tom, do you want to answer this?
Ma'am, we'll make your, this is the county manager speaking. We will make your comments known to the sheriff and the district attorney, and we'll try to get you an answer back via the sheriff's office. That would be his area.
Okay, but just tell me this, though. Are you telling me, just so I'm clear? Because I, you know, we're out here, we're, you know, we're people just working every day and doing all that. We can't know everything in and out of the government, how the government, how it works or whatever. But this can't just be on the sheriff, right? The sheriff doesn't make, so are you telling me that the sheriff's department and just the sheriff's department is making, you guys are the county commissioners. We're the ones that, you know, you represent us. How can, so are you telling me that just the sheriff's department and the district attorney's office make the determination on the demands that were made by the people?
The sheriff-
You guys don't have any input or power?
The sheriff and the district attorney set policy, use of force policies for that particular department. The sheriff is an independent elected official. They do communicate back and-
Okay, that's fine. Let you guys go on with your day. That answers my question. And I don't know if you guys all, I think most, I don't know how old you are or anything like that, but some of you may have been around in the 60s. Wichita wasn't a joke. So y'all might not have nothing to say. So that's fine. Just let, make sure the public knows that. So, you know, I know how to vote in my district or whatever next time. If I don't, you know, so that's fine. But I thought you guys had some input or some kind of power in terms of something that serious that impact, would impact the whole city. But, okay, I guess I need to, you go ahead and contact the sheriff's department then? And what do I do to get an answer? Do I need to call them or not?
Ma'am, actually, the sheriff has actually just texted me and advised that the sheriff's department in Sedgwick County does not train on chokehold. His policy is very clear that the only time a chokehold could be justified is if it is a deadly force situation. So-
Okay, that's fine. And I'll go ahead and say this since we said that. I know it's on the chokehold and everything, but if we look at the history of Wichita, there's been many, many black men shot in the back several times unarmed or with a knife that could have been taken down another way, and the police and sheriff. And then, so I'm going to say it's more than just, just the chokehold. That was just one thing on there. So no, it has not always been, I know what the policy says as far as that. I read that online. But that is not what played out in real life like we've seen what happened. And so that's fine. I don't want, I'm not wanting to be long to continue this. So it looks like, okay, the people will just have to continue to do what they do. And if it, let's just hope and pray that it comes to Wichita. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. It looks like next up, we have James Kilpatrick.
James, are you on the line?
Hello?
Hi, James. James, you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. This is James Kilpatrick, Wichita, Kansas. What I'd like to see the county commission do is go away from the disruptives and costly COVID-19 policies that we currently have, and to return to the previous policies for communicable diseases, that of counting those who sought treatment, were hospitalized, or died. The purpose of that is COVID-19 is real, just like the previous pandemics, SARS-1, H1N1, influenza seasons. But we've never done the policies that we do for COVID-19 in 2020. And we left those policies and went to the current policies because CDC said that we would have two men dead if we didn't do radical departures. Well, COVID-19 has not been that bad. It's closed businesses, changed lives, and taken people's honors. But the problem was, the disease itself wasn't that bad. Prior to March 24th, you had to have COVID-19 to be a COVID case. The CDC changed the policy on March 24th to say that it could be any possible or probable cause to make it a COVID-19. When they did that, they literally changed that definition, created a new policy called reconciliation or review. In other words, a doctor said you died of this, KDHE would review the death certificate and say, no, that's a COVID-19 death. So you can see just in political decision what that did. You can ask any doctor, would you put a person in the hospital for just having COVID-19? And they'll tell you, no. The next thing that happened after they created that policy in the first week, USA deaths went from 494 to 11,661. In New York, in one review, they went from 6,000 deaths to over 10,000 deaths. KDHE on October 26th reported 976 deaths, but they also showed approximately 300 of them were due to the new policy of review. So you can see how the statistics are being inflated by the new policy of a definition only and not by the disease itself. So the stats are subjective and possible erroneous. Add to that manipulated statistics, you also have the problem that COVID-19 became a cash cow. We began reimbursing people for any COVID-19 expenses, any kind of expenses. So now we've given an economic incentive to have COVID-19 responsible for being treated or any other excuse you can use to get a reimbursement. This is not good. Along with that reimbursement policy, if you have a copy of the Sedgwick County Dashboard, when August 24th, CDC has changed its policy, saying it would no longer test the general population, but would switch to a testing policy of symptomatic and high-risk populations. If you have the chart in front of you, you can see the August 24th date. You can see where the positive range of test results went up, and we should have expected that. We've changed the population we're testing. As a matter of fact, just in the last week or so, they've changed the policy to start testing asymptomatic people. So we should see a drop in those percentages. Now, that shows you just a policy change. What it did create the illusion that COVID-19 was worse than what it is. Now, you have a KDHE COVID-19 chart there. There's many things that it can reflect, but the two that I want to draw attention to is CDC tells us 94% of the deaths for COVID-19 have a comoridity factor. In other words, something else is wrong with the patient. And you can decide whether COVID-19 killed him or whether the other cause killed him, but you need to ask a doctor, would they hospitalized that patient for just COVID-19? And ask them, what is it about COVID-19 that causes the death? They won't be able to give you that answer. Okay, we also reported in that chart, you'll see that positive cases reflect a development of herd immunity. Now, that's a positive case, a positive factor for us.
James.
So, yes?
It looks like your time has expired. Can you wrap it up?
Okay. But we need to return to the policies instead of destroying the businesses. Go back to past practices. That's what I'm asking for.
Well, thank you for providing all of your information. We all did receive the charts that you were referencing. Appreciate you being here today. Thank you, James.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes, item A, special meeting minutes of November 5th, 2020.
Commissioners, I would like to make a motion to receive and file all items A through C. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hal.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
I know that Chairman Meitzner is having a hard time hearing the commission and the clerk. Commissioner Meitzner, the roll was called for the meeting minutes.
Aye. Sorry, I can't hear very well the clerk. So I, I'm in favor of receiving file.
Okay, thank you. We're doing the best we can today with our technology. Thank you for bearing with us. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Madam Chair, if I could interrupt. Could you also receive and file the public comments as well before we move on? Or did we do that already?
We did that already.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. New business. It looks like we have Chris Labrum. Madam Clerk, call the next item.
Item D, hearing for the proposed adoption of the National Electrical Code 2020 edition.
All right. Good morning, Chairman Meitzner, Pro Temp Cruz, Commissioners, Chris Labrum, MABCD, as stated. And today, presenting adoption of the 2020 National Electrical Code with amendments. This is a public hearing, though I'm not aware of anyone here to speak today. So, but we will need to offer it up to public comment before we close, as a reminder. So what we have, again, NEC, this is Article 4 of our Unified Building and Trade Code. There's not much change to this presentation from what we showed in staff meeting. So I'll blast through it here fairly quickly, but please make sure to stop me if you have questions or if you would like any more detail. Does update the national code as well as then our local amendments. It is a, this code is a part of the National Fire Protection Association, specifically published under NFPA 70, also associated with some other national standards. It does nest with our International Code Council codes that we use. As we've stated before, of course, electricity is so different in different countries that it doesn't work to have an international code there. Our trades codes are revised every three years in order to remain current with the changing industry. And then one note here, as I've also mentioned to you all before, is that the Board of Electrical Appeals was well into the process of reviewing this code when the COVID restrictions, et cetera, hit, and we stopped meeting for some time. So we delayed a little bit in the adoption, but once they were able to get back together electronically and a little bit in person, they were able to catch up and finish up their review, which then put them and the industry ahead of us. So we are seeking to start enforcing this code on 1 January, but it's actually the industry asking us to go ahead and accelerate and get it in place since they're ready for this. They've been working on it all year. So administratively, we're a little later in the game than we would like to be, but as an industry, they are well prepared for this. As has been stated before, this coordinates across the different codes. So this is just a list of the other codes that we use that have reference to and with the electrical code. The last adoption of this code was in September of 2017. That was the 2017 NEC. We had 27 amendments at the time. The 2020 NEC now brings 34 amendments, some of those we will point out later. It does include four of those that we've slated for a future adoption or exclusion, meaning that we will allow them for this, allow them to be used by the industry in this code cycle, and we'll evaluate their effectiveness and whether there's a need to actually bring that into the code. We did have 12 items that were excluded previously in the code, and that has been reduced to seven. So just to give one quick example of an amendment where we take some of the restrictedness of the code out, so ceiling fans. The new code states that any box that would be in a position in a room that could have a fan, meaning it's far enough away from the wall that you could put a ceiling fan there, should be rated to hold the fan. We realize that people are not going to put ceiling fans in the corners of their rooms, so we allow them to designate the boxes in the ceiling that would or could be used for fans, and only have those boxes be, those weighted for the rate of a fan versus having to install every light fixture to that level. So that's just one example of something that we do when we amend the code, if that helps to give a little bit of a picture of that. We also always like to remind of the jurisdiction and the impact that the code will have. Of course, unincorporated county and city, as well as anyone who contracts with us and uses our code, will be affected by this. And as always, we put a lot of stock in the industry, how the contractors feel about requirements, what we're seeing in inspections, and ensuring that we're not having issues in managing the code, and especially that we are not having any safety issues, which is the main reason for the code. The amendments that we have this year are the cycle, excuse me, are relatively minimal. So that adoption process, to go through that again as well, kicked off by the Board of Electrical Appeals, was reviewed by several industry associations, which included the National Electrical Contractors Association. That would be, that would include their training center, and that is the union-based representation in our industry. Then, as well as the independent electrical contractors, their association and their training industry. We also had our fire departments, both county and city, review this, as well as the local electrical suppliers. Then, after all of that, we were able to meet with WABA and go over that with them. They were also able to discuss this with some of the review agencies there and-
We could just get-
Hold on. Hold on.
We're working to get Chairman Meitzner in on the phone line so he can hear a little bit better. Bear with us as we work this out.
I'm muted.
So mute, so mute your Zoom call on your computer.
All right. And so it does, so we do have full support from WABA. We do have two items that will result in somewhat of a substantial change to the current industry practices, which we, and we will look at those as we go through examples of some of the more significant amendments. So the first two are examples of changes that we are, we're giving the option for, and we will evaluate during this cycle. So this would require any 250-volt circuit, anything that, any outlet for major appliances, basically, to be GFCI protected. So that would include your oven, dryer, those sort of items. Again, we will certainly not stop anyone from installing a GFCI on those, but we have not seen the amount of testing. We also have not seen enough data to see this as a significant safety concern in order to require that at this point. So we have the criteria in the code as an option, gives us everything we need to inspect to. And then this is slated to be either adopted or removed in the, when we get the 2024 code, or the 2023 code, which would go live in January of '24. Same applies to air conditioning units. Baseline code now asks us to require GFCI for all of those. And again, plan is exactly the same there. Give companies and individuals who would like that a chance to test it. We'll see what data we get over the next three years, and if we want to keep this or amend it out as a requirement. So another, something that would have been fairly significant that we elected to remove from the code is, would be for surge protection on the dwelling. So same concept as the surge protector on your computer. This, the design of this would be a surge protection on the overall circuit board in your home, circuit panel, and that, of course, designed to protect major appliances and equipment, especially with the price and the level of technology and electronics today, where this is not protecting the safety of a person. We, again, saw no need to make it an actual requirement. So it would be an option. Certainly would encourage anyone who wants this to install that on their electrical system of their home, business, et cetera. But we, again, since it's not a direct safety of human life aspect, we do not want to create an added cost to the industry where it's not necessary. So a few of the items, the two items that will cause a little change to our local practice, but we do, we do see as necessary and as a positive thing at this point, are the emergency disconnects to a dwelling. So that we will begin requiring that on new homes, and this would also apply on a home that is, that changes its electrical or upgrades its electrical service, that that dwelling unit exterior emergency disconnect be on the exterior. Evergy is going to begin requiring this as well. And then, of course, the main issue here, safety and especially safety of emergency responders, where they would be able to access the box from the outside. Our current code, current amendment, still allows for the emergency disconnect to be located inside the home, to be within 15 feet of where the electricity enters the home. So again, this would just move that to where that disconnect has to be on the outside and has to be accessible there. Part of the safety factor there, too, is that service entrance is the one area in the home where your live wires are not protected. So this, then again, if it's inside that box, gives it better protection there, and especially for anyone who's responding to an emergency at the home. Then along with that, if there is an emergency disconnect, or excuse me, an emergency generator installed in the home, there would also need to be the emergency, associated emergency disconnect on the exterior, the same fashion as with the overall electrics to the home. So that concludes the summarized presentation of the code changes today. Again, a reminder that we will need to open it up for comment. So our recommendation to the commission is that we receive public comment, close the public hearing, and adopt the code.
Thank you, Chris. What you guys do is very important to keep our community safe, so I appreciate you being here. At this time, I'd like to open for public comment. Looks like we don't see anyone for public comment. I'll get to you after this, and then we'll close public comment. And then Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One quick question on the emergency disconnect. What does that do with security systems? We have, people have elaborate security systems in their homes. How are we going to keep that security system alive?
Do you speak to that? I'm going to have our electrical chief, Chris Nordic, come up and speak to that.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chris Nordic, MABCD. Yeah, it's the same scenario. The system would be disconnected with the disconnection of the main disconnect outside. So the entire home would be disconnected once that disconnect is shut off. Right now, currently, we have unfused service entrance conductors entering the structure. So this will actually protect those conductors going in. But to answer your question specifically, if it's got a security system tied into the panel, it will also be disconnected unless it has a battery backup, which some do.
My concern isn't when a first responder arrives. It's when a burglar arrives and there is no fire, and they shut off the emergency disconnect.
Right. To answer that question, the emergency disconnects are designed to be locked. That emergency disconnect is the property of the owner, so the owner has the ability to certainly put their padlock on it and lock it out.
So then the first responder then cuts the lock?
Would cut the lock, yeah.
Okay, that answers my question. I appreciate it. Thank you.
A great question. Commissioner Hal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of questions. On the, I understand it's optional until 2024. With respect to the GF, GCFI, GFCI, service on the 220, 230-volt services to the outside units and things like the dryer inside the home, do we have any data that backs up the need for that change? Do we have a study that says people have been injured or hurt in some way that is a consequence of not having that regulation in place?
So what we're aware of is, yes, there are a few instances where that, specific instances, instances where injuries occurred, and that that's why that was added- where injuries occurred, and that that's why that was added to the code. But exactly along the lines of your question, we have that same question as to the level and the need. Also, the fact that with, so if you take the arc fault interruption, for example, that we we require more of now, that was in the code for 18 or 19 years and had been through lab testing and a lot of different things before we required it to the level that we do now. So where this is new to this level, exactly, we do not have a great amount of data to support keeping it. And we don't have significant instances that make us feel that is a that is a large safety issue. So that's why, at this point, we don't want to fully bring that into the code. But we also want to be careful in fully excluding it at this point. So this was an idea that the electrical that Mr. Nordic and his electrical board had to try something a little differently, go ahead and leave it in the code, but not making a mandatory requirement at this point till we can get some more data.
I think that's the right position to be in. I just think that before 2024, we probably ought to have that data, you know, firmed up if there's a reason to go forward with the implementation of this to be a mandatory regulation. I think optional, obviously. So if someone wants to put it in, it's a great idea. I liken this to the home sprinkler systems, fire suppression sprinkler systems. I think it's a great idea if someone wants to invest in that. But and if they do that, you should have an inspection criteria to make sure it's done correctly, but it shouldn't be it shouldn't be mandatory. So I think this is a good place for us to be on that. With respect to the disconnect outside the home, can you please explain, is this between the the electrical service and the meter or between the meter and the and the home?
It's between the meter and the home.
He says it's between the meter and the home.
Meter and the home. Yes, sir.
Okay. And and you say that the homeowner has access to this. And so if they wanted to remove service to their home, they would have the right to go out there, unpadlock that, open it up, and remove service.
That is correct.
Outside their home if they wanted to do that. But what's the average cost for a normal, you know, 200-amp service for a home? What's it? Do we know what that would cost per home?
I'll turn it back to Mr. Nordic.
Commissioners, that's that's a really difficult question. I mean, it really depends on the contractor, obviously. But you're looking at somewhere between, if you're talking about a 200-amp service, you're looking at somewhere between $1,100 and $1,500 for a service, for just the service portion of it. That would include the meter, the main, the panel board, and then, of course, everything else is excluded from that. But just that service change itself, if you were going to have a service change done on your house, it's usually going to be around there, somewhere in that ballpark. It could be a lot more expensive to that. It depends on the size of the service that you want to include. But the the meter enclosure itself is going to be a combo meter slash main enclosure, and it will also come with the ability to have other other overcurrent device spaces in it. So you can actually have things like pool houses served from that panel outside or a generator served from that panel outside or solar wind, things like that. So it gives you a lot more options than having the panel inside. But yeah, it's about $1,500 on average.
Does the electrician, do they, are they the ones that pulls the meter to to install this disconnect?
They actually have to call Evergy and have the meter pulled, and then they can do the work.
Is there additional cost for Evergy to do that as well?
No.
Okay. I'd just say, you know, if we have a first responder right now that shows up, assuming it's a firefighter, there's a potential fire inside of a structure, and they need to remove power from that right now, what's the current process that they would do that?
The current process is that they contact Evergy. Evergy, as a utility company for the city of Wichita, and as a corporation throughout Kansas and Missouri, their policy is that nobody accesses the meter enclosure due to the fact that there are live parts. So there's no real dead front cover that protects you from coming in contact with the busing. So their policy is do not enter that. So generally, what happens is that response is twofold. It's to the fire department and to the utility company. Utility company will arrive and remove that meter if they have the time to, and they'll get that taken care of so the fire department can act on the fire. In some instances, the fire department actually has to go in and remove that meter, which puts them in danger of getting inside that live meter enclosure.
I guess I'm just, again, I'm not a I'm not an expert on this, obviously, but I think what I've seen inside those, I'm aware of what's in there, they simply unplug the meter. It's got it's got contacts that that engage, if you will, a male-female type socket. It just plugs right in and it makes the connection, it runs the current through the meter. I would liken it very similar to a, again, a different part, but not so much different than a service disconnect for a for a air conditioning system. On the outside, there's a service disconnect, and you pull that out. There's there are essentially contacts that are making that connection there. So pulling the meter is very much like that. It's not the same as flipping a handle, which is, I think, what you're talking about here.
I think the only difference in the AC disconnect aspect is that in an AC disconnect, you again have that plastic cover that covers the line side wires that are live and the bus that they terminate on. So you have this little handle pull that you can reach in and pull. It's insulated. That will protect you from the line side busing of being able to come in contact. Within a meter enclosure, you do not have that. You actually reach in and grab the meter with your fingers in very close proximity, if you're grabbing the meter, to the live bars, the live buses. That would be the only difference.
Well, and just to be clear, has the Builders Association weighed in on this? Have they they said they're okay with it? Or they're just, they like it, they don't like it? Have they weighed in?
Well, that is correct. So there obviously was discussion about the increased cost because this will come with some cost. But Evergy is also going, will no longer give the free meter enclosures, begin as as part of their policy going forward anyway. So the it was somewhat required, or it was going this direction anyway, you could say, Commissioner. So that cost was going to be incurred either way. The the impact that they see is not overly significant. So in the end, they did agree that this is the best way to manage it, to go ahead and and manage it through the code versus being in a reactive mode with the changes to the from the energy company.
I'll just say this, you know, I'm worried about ever increasing regulations. This is another regulation that adds cost to the cost of a home. It makes it more difficult for people to get into a home because it's it's not something they can enjoy. It's like it's a bathroom fixture or a, you know, something in their kitchen. This is something that is simply just a structure that frankly creates safety. Although, I'm not sure there's actually a problem. I think if we were to train firefighters on pulling the meter, that would be a lot less expensive. Every home has that option. And as far as I know, that's what's been done in the past. I don't know, I don't think the danger there is much. Firefighters do a lot of things that are very dangerous anyway. They're excellent what they do. And I just think this is this is another way to do the same thing that's been done for years, but this adds a lot of cost to a home. So I don't like this regulation. I'm willing to go with it because it sounds like the advisory board is supportive of it, and the builders are okay with it. I don't think it's a necessary thing, but I wish we weren't adding cost to the price of a home and adopting this new this new code. So I don't like that one part of it, but I guess I'll go with the flow. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the comments. It looks like there are no other questions, so I will make a motion to approve.
Do we need the public comments?
Well, I opened the public comments, and then I closed the public comments.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So I think that we're good to go. So a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, there has been a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. And I want to tell you thank you. I can hear on the phone, everybody. I can hear everybody just fine. So that is my vote.
Can we make, can we hear him, I guess? I want to make sure that we can hear him. Is there any way to make that louder?
Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Chairman. Okay, as in true fashion with 2020, it looks like we are going to, I would like to make a motion to recess for five minutes. We have a new Commissioner coming on board today, and we need to discuss. So motion to recess for five minutes.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay, we will come back at about 9:46, 7-ish. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Chairman, that's good. All times off.
All time awesome.
Thank you so much for allowing that recess. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. We have received official word that our newest Commissioner can be sworn in, so I would like to recognize our county clerk, Kelly Arnold. Oh, excuse me. Commissioners, I would like to call for, make a motion for an off agenda item?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you. County Clerk Kelly Arnold, please.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Very excited to be able to swear on our next Commissioner, Dalton Glasscock. If you'd raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office as Sedgwick County Commissioner. So help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We'll allow a moment. Allow a moment for our newest Commissioner to be seated, and we will head to the next item. And we'll put him to work.
Madam Chair, we might take a new roll call with the new Commissioner on the bench.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, Discussion of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act.
Commissioners, good morning. Tom Stoles, County Manager. And the CARES item today has multiple facets, as usual. First, Lindsay will, we want to take some time this morning and recognize our, the group that helped us manage external expenditures with CAREs. So Lindsay will cover that first. And then we'll get into the meat of the item. Brent will take the podium and ask you to approve or vote on an award that he will cover. Mike Fessinger will then take the podium. We have a bit of a housekeeping item that he's going to want you to consider regarding the Wichita State Equipment Contract to take a vote on. Lindsay will then take the podium, and you will vote on, she has a number of items for approval today, which will require a vote, either individually or all as a group. She will also talk about, and this came from the staff meeting yesterday, she'll discuss a possibility of childcare remote learning programs that the Commission could consider. And it's possible we would need a vote there. And then finally, she will give a summary of the COVID spending process, which will be a receive and file. So there's five business items, but a little bit of ceremony here at the beginning. And Lindsay, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsay Porusso, your CFO. So it is my pleasure this morning to be able to kick off this item to recognize your Financial Stimulus Review Team. So when we first learned that CARES funding was coming to the county, something that you and the County Manager pushed forward was to ensure citizen oversight. And so one of the very first actions you approved was the creation of this committee. And there was a lot of time spent on finding the people who could represent those interests and had some business savvy, understood government spending, to make sure that you all were given the best possible recommendations on how to allocate this funding. And Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO graciously took on the role to chair that committee. And I don't think any of us knew what we were asking this group of people to do when we asked them to come onboard. And so it is my absolute pleasure to say thank you. We do have several members here today. I'll let Brent introduce those team members when he comes up and tell you a little bit more. But I just, we have a small token to say thank you to each of them. A nice engraved pen holder with the initial of their first name, and it says Cedric County FSRT, Financial Stimulus Review Team Chair or Member, with great appreciation. And then for a little bit of humor, we have pens that say, "Thank You For Caring 2020," in all caps with C-A-R-E. So a very small token, not nearly enough to say thank you to this team. But certainly Brent has led with integrity, dedication, sacrificed many hours, as all of the members of the team have. And so I'm going to turn this over to Brent, give this to him, and then let him introduce the rest of the team.
Good morning, Brent. Thank you, Lindsay.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO. I'd like for you just to imagine a moment that you get a phone call from maybe Tom, or Lindsay, or me, and we ask you to take advantage of an opportunity to help us dispense millions of dollars to local nonprofit organizations in the public health and social services arena. And that doesn't sound too bad. And then we go a little further and tell you that you're going to have to help us stay compliant with federal regulations that we've just received, and by the way, they change every week. And we got to get all this work done by the end of the year. That means the money has to be out and be in use. And to a person, they said yes. And if that wasn't enough, once they were committed and we began to meet, we all found out that the meetings were going to be held public, which meant that all this business had to be done in the sunshine. So we were going to have an open, transparent process that everyone could view. They were livestreamed on YouTube and on Facebook, and to my knowledge, none have yet gone viral. But we do know that people watched, because we had occasion in a couple of those meetings where applicants actually did send emails to Hope, who was our point person in gathering information and provided us with supplemental information so that we could make timely decisions to make those award recommendations to you for approval so these agencies could go about doing the work that they were doing and responding to the pandemic. So I guess, at this point, I want to introduce the members of the community that are here today, we'll mention those that are not able to join us. But as Lindsay said, we found folks with the experience in municipal and local government finance, academia, nonprofit administration, business accounting, and a lot of community involvement on the part of these committee members. So first of all, I'd like to introduce Jane McHugh. She's a CPA, a retired partner with BKD. She now works with HB Management, a local family-owned business. And Jane, if you would like to come up and receive your token, and I'll give you the microphone.
Welcome, Jane.
Thank you. Thank you. Never addressed the County Commission before. This was a really good committee. It was very collegial. Everyone worked very hard. And I believe the whole committee would like to particularly thank the staff. The finance staff were just outstanding. Brent, Hope, Lindsay, Kevin, I think from Shannon, all really bent over backwards to help the committee. We asked question after question after question, and they went back to applicants. We tried to follow Commissioner Dennis, sustainability, but also give people a chance. And I think the committee did a good, we felt we did a good job of that. Not perfect, but we were proud of our work.
Well, thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your efforts. I did watch a few of those meetings, and I know that they were tedious. There was a lot to do, so I appreciate your volunteering your time.
Next up, we have Melody Miller. Melody is the owner of Miller's Barbecue, the world's best baked beans. She's a former elected official. She's sat in a seat here in the County Commission, has been a member of the state legislature. A longtime committee volunteer, so Melody, here's your.
Thank you, Brent.
Good morning, Melody. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. I always have to adjust my mic. Anyone that knows me knows that. I always have to adjust my mic. So first and foremost, I want to thank the County Commission, each and every one, for the guidance. And specifically, I want to thank Commissioner Cruz for extending a personal invite for me to join this team. Just as my colleague on the committee, Jane, has stated, staff has been phenomenal. Not only do you care, oh, there goes that word again, but not only do you care, but you are so intent on giving the quick feedback, thinking of you, Hope, and then being the experts in your field. So it was a pleasure to work with staff and to work with a committed committee that has all the expertise that each one of you have. And I'm looking at you, Jane, and Jane, you ask a lot of questions, and you get a lot of answers. And then for you, Brent, I think you might be a closet actor the way you introduced everyone. That was pretty darn good. So just for me to end, this, to me, was democracy at its best. Why? Because we had the sunshine on the meetings. People were actually able to see and hear what their applications, how they were being played out, discussed, asked questions asked, and then to be able to respond to it. So this was probably one of the most relevant opportunities I've had to engage at this level. And I am so hope-filled that it's not, we couldn't do everything, but that some of these CARES dollars actually get into the hands of those that need it most, and that they get to be used in order to ease some of the burden, and hopefully, for some people, actually start to tamp down the spread of this virus. So once again, thank you. Now I can actually put away my mug that I keep all my pens in, and I have a classy little dish that I can use. So thank you, and enjoy your holidays.
Thank you, Melody. I think we have a question or a comment from Commissioner Dennis.
Well, thank you. And I want to express my appreciation to what the committee did, and not only the committee, but also our staff for being involved in that. But I do have one question for you all. I am certainly hoping that Congress comes up with something that will take us beyond December 30th. And if they don't, the funding is going to come out of our general funds, because the expenses are not going to go away, and we're going to continue having things happen. So I guess my request to you all is, if we can get additional funding, I'm sure that we're going to still need your services after December 30th. So please consider continuing on if we can get the additional funding.
Well, and just think what kind of pen you'll get.
Thank you. We will. I'm guessing.
Thank you very much.
Well, Melody, thank you. You know, I think when I was, when we were told about the development of this stimulus review team, you really popped into my mind, one, because of your experience on this bench, two, because of your experience in the legislature, and three, because representation matters. And I'm so thankful that you decided to accept the invitation, because you have a lot to do, and it's so important to have your voice represented in this community.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Sure.
I appreciate that.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to, just wanted to express my thanks to you as well. Our time together actually overlapped in the legislature.
Yes.
And I just want to say about your character, you're an extreme professional. You're a deep thinker. I did also watch the work that this committee did. It was very well done. I want to say thank you for your excellent work. You're very thoughtful. You were consistent. You were fair. And it was a lot of time you spent to do a great job. And I'll just say the county, frankly, without your help, we would not have been able to do this. So you are really a key piece to our success. And I want to say thank you very, very much. And I agree with Commissioner Dennis. If we had more opportunities, I hope that you'll consider continuing this as long as we have other things to discuss. But your commitment was awesome, and your professionalism and your work was excellent. We set the bar very high for the rest of the state. And I think other communities were watching what we did. And I think that we had the right people at the table to do an excellent job. So I want to say thank you for all you did. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you, all of you.
Commissioner Glasscock, and then Chairman Meitzner.
So this is my first time addressing from the bench. And I just want to say, as, you know, a private citizen prior to this, and seeing the work that you guys did from the outside perspective, it was phenomenal. And all of you, the county should be indebted to your service. And thank you for the time and the energy that you spent on this work. And I think it shows in the outcomes that we've seen so far. So thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you. Chairman Meitzner?
Thank you. Melody and Jane, I just echo everything's been said. What a challenge. We kind of had a nightmare knowing that you were going to have to meet weekly, twice a week, deadlines, 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 and relooking at other, you know, relooking at things more than once. And I just, I felt very comfortable in every time stuff came in front of us. I think of all the hundreds that came in front of us, we maybe only questioned one or two items. And really, it wasn't a negative question. It was just a background for one of the commissioners. So I think it's a congratulations and a job well done. We were, you were ahead of the game. I think Johnson County copied us, and I think even part of the Spark team in Topeka copied what you all were doing. So my appreciation, and you should be impressed and be proud of what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
We have one other member of the committee that's here today. That's our internal member of the committee, Hope Hernandez, who's your accounting director. And I would remiss to say, if she didn't take the role as my right-hand person, my left-hand person, she was our point of contact for all the agencies. Once those applications were in, and we started having follow-up questions, Hope was the point of contact so that it could be disseminated properly, get the information out of the committee, and make sure that we did not run afoul of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. So it was a lot of work that Hope did, and I would recognize her now.
Good morning, Hope.
Good morning. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to serve on this committee. Through all the great questions that the team members had, I've learned a lot about the different organizations that we have in the community and what services they offer. So it was great to work with my fellow team members and help our county. So, thank you.
Thank you for all you did. I appreciate it, and will do in the future. I know that that was a lot of work. And I have to agree that learning about all of the different social service providers was pretty enlightening to see all of the work that's being done in our community. I know a couple of people who have received these, and they are so grateful for the work that you did, because really, I mean, when you don't have any money and you get 5,000 bucks, it's a lot. So I appreciate the time and effort that you put into all of this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
There were three other members of the committee that were voting members. That was Dr. Melissa Walker, the interim director. And she's an associate professor with the Hugo Wall School of Public Affairs at WSU. Very insightful. She brings, brought a lot of experience in the nonprofit sector to the group. And then we had a couple of city folks. Kyle Mangus, who's the deputy city manager with the City of Derby, and Mark Manning, the city treasurer with the City of Wichita. Both brought some experience in terms of municipal accounting, contributed a great deal to the committee. So we're appreciative of everyone's efforts on the committee. We'll make sure that Dr. Walker, Kyle, and Mark get their token of appreciation, and that we'll extend kind words to them and let them know that we do appreciate their work. As has been said, this group did do a great deal of work. And I think the thing that most impressed me was their ability to be generous and have a genuine willingness to get the money out into the community, but make sure we do it correctly. Make sure we follow the guidance. And they threaded that needle with precision. And I just appreciate everyone's time, attention, critical thinking, and most of all, hard work and time. The county's been well-served. I've appreciated my time with them, and the community's better off because of the work of these folks. And Commissioner Dennis? I just want to let you know that they have my number on caller ID, so someone else may have to call them to reenlist them for additional service should more money come our way. But I would just give it up to the committee. They've done a phenomenal job.
Thank you, ladies. All right, Brent, what you got next?
I've got the report card from their last meeting.
You are full of jokes today.
So at the last Financial Stimulus Review Team meeting, which was Monday morning, the stimulus review team did two things. First of all, they looked at our process for reviewing all of the procedures that we're using for reviewing all the expenditure reports that we're going to be receiving from municipalities, from schools, and from the public health and social service agencies. Part of the original scope of work was for them to be involved in reviewing these. But that, as we got more guidance, we determined that it just, there wasn't enough time in anyone's day. So we have a team of six auditors, two internal auditors, our leading teams of two apiece, of external auditors from DRS, one of our consultants, to go through all of these applications, all of these accounts, review the expenditures for appropriateness, and then they'll bring that back. We'll bring that to you for your approval of those disbursements to those agencies. They had some insights and some questions for us as we went through that process, basically approved what we're doing. And so it's just another testament to their human and their ability to help influence this process in an open, public manner. So that was the first thing that we did on Monday morning. We then looked at the final application that we had before us, and it was from the Raise My Head Foundation. And the committee has recommended a $15,000 award to the Raise My Head Foundation for their work and some of the responsive things that they've done for COVID. So at this time, I would look for a motion to approve the additional award recommendations of the Financial Stimulus Review Team of $15,000, which will bring the cumulative total award recommendations
Thank you, Brent. I don't see any questions. Commissioner Meitzner? Chairman Meitzner, do you have any questions?
No. Thank you, Brent, for the presentation. I'd like a motion to approve.
Second? There's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you, Brent. Motion passes. Is that, you have some more?
Do have just some items for receive and file, some brief updates. First of all, after the comments that were made yesterday that you initiated, Commissioner Cruz, about the public schools going remote, I just wanted to let you know that one of the applicants that we've awarded funds to, which is the YMCA, has been running a program for the May School District, and they've expanded it to the Wichita School District. They, we had a phone conversation yesterday, but they let us know that they were not going to be able to spend all of the award that they had been given. So they're going to now use those additional leftover funds that they would have had to stand up a program. It's not going to touch everybody, but it's a start. And they have one program that they can take 15 students, first through fifth grade. And they're working on a couple of others. One for kindergartners, where they can take five students. Another one, trying to stand up another program for first through fifth graders. So it's not going to touch the entirety of the Wichita School District, but it is a start. And it just kind of speaks to how they heard what was going on and were able to expand a program that they already had. had in place to try to begin to meet some of those needs. The other programs that, for external funding, the Safe Operating Grant Program, those were the $5,000 grants awarded to businesses and nonprofits. That portal closed at midnight Monday, November 30. And it will tell you that the last application we received came in at midnight, Monday, November 30, literally right at midnight. It was timestamped. We received 2,014 applications up to that point. The duplication, duplicative applications have been removed. And so we now have 1,558 valid, non-duplicative applications that are going through the process. That would be an estimated total award of $7,664,325. That does exceed the allocation. So should we fund all of these, that'll be part of an adjusted care spending plan that we would bring to you in the future. To date, we have paid 901 grants totaling $4,443,334. And those were paid out through the end of business yesterday. So out of that 1,550, 900 have been paid. So we still have about 650 to go. And a lot of them came in in the last two or three days. So they're just getting started through that process. I'm confident that we'll be able to make it through. Expenditure reports for the workforce development recipients are due on December 11. Once those are in, we'll go through reviewing that, those expenses, and we'll be bringing then review and dispersment requests to you for them, as well as for the public health and social service agencies and municipalities as they file, continue to file those monthly reports. So the focus of these presentations is going to shift over the next three weeks to we're going to be actually bringing you the amounts of money that we're going to request that you authorize us to write checks for. You authorize it on Wednesday. Those checks will go out on Thursday. So we're going to get the money out as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you for that, Brent. My question really remains around the possibility of funds for daycare. Now, you know, there was a report that I read yesterday that roughly 865,000 women compared to 216,000 men have left the workforce from, in September. And I think it's important that we understand the effects that closing schools has on single parents, parents trying to figure out someplace for their children to go while they still have a career, they still want to, they have to provide for their families somehow. So will you be bringing that back? And excuse me if I missed it, because I was trying to write all this down, but you'll be bringing something back for us to consider? Or what's going on?
The part that I presented was just to give you an overview of one program that's trying to respond to that need.
Okay.
Lindsay has more information in terms of some work that's been done yesterday after
Okay.
after that came to light. So she's going to bring you some more information about trying to stand up something more comprehensive. But that was just, that was one response I wanted to share with the commission.
Okay, thank you, Brent. I don't see any questions from commissioners, so I will make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock? Aye. Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you, Brent. Next, do we have, is Mike Fessinger? He's on the phone. Okay?
Mike, are you there? I am. Commissioner Mike Fessinger here, Assistant County Counselor. Please let me know if I'm having any audio issues as I go through this. This morning, I have for your consideration a legal slash audit issue associated with WSU's molecular diagnostic lab, otherwise known as the MDL. This issue arose yesterday in the late afternoon between Disaster Recovery Services and Whit O'Brien, our consultant, and WSU. Staff would like your guidance on how to move forward regarding this issue. So to back up here, as you know, we entered into a subrecipient agreement with WSU a couple months ago in order to fund the startup costs of the MDL using CARES Act dollars. And so to that end, WSU purchased robotic equipment for approximately $400,000 that is intended to automate and increase the throughput of the MDL in order to achieve sufficient daily COVID-19 testing performed in Wichita. WSU contends that this robotic equipment is part of the startup costs for the MDL and is therefore properly reimbursable through the CARES Act. And this equipment, crucially, was already budgeted within the $4 million that this commission approved for the reimbursement of the startup costs. I agree with WSU that this robotic equipment is reimbursable both under the CARES Act itself and, in my opinion, under our subrecipient agreement. The issue, however, is whether the equipment was included in WSU's original proposal that was approved initially by this commission. And please recall that you approved WSU's proposal and then approved the subrecipient agreement. So in DRS's view, both documents are relevant from an audit perspective. The bottom line here is that DRS is uncomfortable with WSU being reimbursed for purchases that might fall outside the scope of WSU's original proposal, and has opined that such a reimbursement could lead to a negative audit finding. My own review of the materials last night is inconclusive. In other words, I don't know if WSU put this board on sufficient notice that this robotic equipment would be part of startup costs or not. They likely did not list this equipment specifically enough, but that's not fatal to their request now. And it's not necessarily unreasonable either, given that the startup of this project was extremely complicated and rapid. WSU's proposal evolved along with the needs of our community and our understanding of COVID-19. So this issue can be resolved through a specific acknowledgement by this board that the robotic equipment is okay for consideration of reimbursement by county staff. DRS feels this will help ensure that the county will not be subject to a negative audit finding from BKD, and I concur with their analysis on this. Passing the following motion language to clarify eligible reimbursable expenses should resolve this issue and will allow staff to consider for reimbursement of robotic equipment without the concern of a negative audit finding. The recommended motion language is to authorize county staff to consider for reimbursement of startup expenses associated with robotic equipment to automate and increase the throughput of COVID-19 testing performed by the WSU Molecular Diagnostics Laboratory. And I know I just dumped a lot of information on you, Commissioner, so I will, we have to answer any questions you might have. I recommend that you take any action if necessary. And please let me know what I can answer for you.
Thank you, Mike, for your work on this. Thank you, Lindsay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to say thank you to the team. We've had numerous meetings between Wichita State University, county staff, and some of the other folks that Mr. Fessinger just mentioned from Whit O'Brien and BKD and others. This is a very complicated issue, but it's easily fixed. So I appreciate the recommendation from Mr. Fessinger. And what this does, I'll just say this, going back to our discussion months ago, when we discussed the WSU proposed lab, they talked about 4,500 tests per day at that time. The only way to get there is to have automation. And this is a key part of that automation. So whether it was explicitly stated well enough or not, that's really the debate. It's clear to us, and it's clear to me, that this is, this was always the plan. And so to clarify that, I want to make this, I want to make a motion that we would adopt language that would clarify this truth. So I would make a motion that we authorize county staff to consider for reimbursement the expenses associated with robotic equipment to automate and increase the throughput of COVID-19 testing performed by the Wichita State University Molecular Diagnostics Laboratory. And if we adopt that language, I think this cleans things up quite a bit. So I make that motion.
Chairman Meitzner?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. I appreciate Commissioner Howell and Commissioner Cruz for your involvement in working through this with WSU. I, on its surface, when I first read this or heard about it without any outside intro, I thought, well, robotics helping get fast results from testing, to me, from a layman's purview, would be, yes, part of the startup costs. And Mr. Fessinger, thank you for your analysis. And although it may appear on surface to Whit O'Brien or somebody that it may be, I think you said it might fall out of the, might fall outside the world of audit, but it's, I just can't imagine that robotics as a finishing tool on this would not be accepted as part of the startup cost. So I support, thank you, Jim, for the explanation. And I will second the motion that he just made.
Okay, Commissioner Howell? Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a final comment. I just want to say, I want to thank WSU also. This was a. I want to thank WSU. This has been a very, you know, a big challenge for somebody to set up a lab at this speed. And they did a tremendous job. And the community, if they haven't already heard it, they're going to hear it very soon, that we have the ability to do, again, with this automation, we're going to, we expect we will ramp up to 4,500 saliva tests per day. And this will help our school teachers get back, you know, be able to get back into the classroom. It will help our students at the universities. It will help our folks in business be able to stay at the workplace. Trying to move people who are infectious out of the population into isolation, and others that are not infectious, allowing them to safely remain in their workplace or in a classroom is really important. This is a huge step to getting our numbers back under control. And I think that everyone understands how important this is. Out of the $110 million we received for CARES funding altogether, I can't think of anything more important than this. And so I want to say thank you to WSU for their good work and the team of people that are watching this and carefully scrutinizing the language and the documentation. I appreciate them as well. We have to do it right. But I just want to say thank you to everyone. But this is an incredibly important step. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. And I appreciate the efforts of our staff to work through this situation so that we can get the testing up and running with WSU. I know that everyone has paid attention to what I've said recently about trying to get testing so that we can get kids back in school and people back to work. And that's the critical thing. I did have a meeting with Dr. Minz yesterday, just to bring everybody up to speed. And I think that we'll see some new guidance in the near future on business and industry, on how that we can use testing to get people back to work there. His concern right now is the school portion of it, because the Department of Health in Topeka is going to have something to say about how that we do the testing to get teachers and students back in. But he is willing to work with them to try and find a way that we can use testing to bring teachers, staff, and students back into the classroom. So this is really a critical step to make sure that we can get up to that 4,500 tests a day. I did communicate a couple times with Dr. Tomlin yesterday, and he said, yes, he can get us 4,500 tests a day. That's not an exaggeration. So I appreciate that. I also asked him how quickly that he could give us 2,500 tests so that we can stand up the new proposal that is being looked at for how that we're going to do testing in the future. So there's a lot of things that have been going on just the last day or two. But what we're doing right now is critical to make all of those things actually work, because we can't accomplish what we want to do until we can get these testing right here locally where we can turn them around very rapidly, because that's one of the key portions of it. We can't wait two or three or five or seven days if we're going to get people back in school and back to work. We have to be able to turn that test around right away. And that's one of the things that WSU can do for us. There is one other test out there, but we don't know how to get our hands on it yet. I need the Health Department and staff to look at this Abbott test, because that was another component that I talked to Dr. Minz about yesterday. Every single Abbott test was purchased by the US government, but I don't know where they went. Nobody seems to know where they went. But he's of the opinion that if we could use this Abbott test and test the teacher, for example, when she leaves or he leaves for the day, and it comes back negative in the morning, well, it will come back negative within 15 minutes, honestly. If it's negative the next day, they can go back into the classroom or wherever. So I think we need some more definition on where this Abbott test is so that that can help us out. So that's another piece of the puzzle that we need to take a look at. But I guess what I want to do is to assure the public that we are working, trying to figure out the best way of getting students back in the classroom and teachers back in those classrooms and businesses so that they can spirit text draw. And all these huge manufacturers have the exact same problem. And we need a way to speed up this quarantine period, and the testing can do that. So I appreciate all the work that staff and Dr. Minz and everyone that's involved in this have gone through, because it's critical. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. You know, this testing has been a hot topic for all of us. For me, this whole process has been about transparency. It's been about following the same rules and regulations for documentations that we're requiring of every single person who receives this money to avoid an audit. And that was the big thing for me. So I'm happy that we are able to amend or take this action today so that we don't have the potential for audit for the next two, three, however many years to come. So I'm excited and supportive of this. I do want to say, though, that the ability to run these tests is one thing, but we have to get the samples to them to run. So we are, we are talking about sampling. I'm looking at Mr. Tim Kaufman in the back, because I know that he's working on that. Because if they don't have any samples, there's no tests to run. So I hope that we can figure that out. I know that we have applied with WSU. We have gone there, filled out their application to become, working with them. So I'm excited about that. But I really can't thank Kim with Disaster Recovery Services, the gentleman who works with him as well. I know that that conversation got a little intense yesterday, as these things do. But we worked through it, and now we're here. And I do believe that this is a step in the right direction. So those are my comments. Commissioner Glasscock?
Yeah, I just want to commend the work of the committee as well, and the work of staff. You know, Wichita State says that they want to meet the classroom and the real world. And what a better time to serve our community right now. And I feel very comfortable with the clarification that Commissioner Howell made, and just very appreciative of the work of Wichita State and everybody that had worked on reaching a conclusion. And that's, I think, bold action and leadership to try and get everybody on the same page. And I think it's committed in the work that we've seen. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. There is a motion and a second on the floor. Madam Clerk, if there's no other comments, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock? Aye. Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, I'm up next.
Okay.
That's okay. So for the record again, Lindsay Poversoe, your CFO. And thank you, Mike. So the first item we'll talk about today has to do with CARES spending requests. And so I sent you a note yesterday with those three requests, and then Tim Kaufman followed up with an additional request late last night. So again, apologies for not getting this information out more quickly. We are, I promise, doing the best we can to get you this information in a timely fashion. So my recommendation would be that we handle this the same way that you all did last week, where I go through each of the requests. And if it's okay, we can bundle those and do a single vote. And then if you want to break something out, then certainly we can do that, the will of the commission. So with that, at least as a strategy to start with, the first thing I would request is that the commission approve another $1,380,71.60 to be paid to the Wichita State University Molecular Diagnostic Laboratory for startup costs that have been fully reconciled and documented. That would bring the total paid out of the total $4 million allocated to $2,884,630.74. So that leaves about 1.1 million. I had forwarded along a note that DRS had provided, basically stating the status of each of the other requests. Now, a good chunk of that 400 Now, a good chunk of that, four-hundred-thousand dollars, was for the robots. And so the clarification that you just made will help us get down the path to, uh, reconciling that and making a recommendation for that funding. Um, we also then have some additional information where we are either waiting on additional documentation, or perhaps the payment hasn't actually been made, and so once we have proofs of, proof of payment, we'll reimburse that. Again, the contract says that they have up until December tenth to make those payments, and it's still covered under the contract for us to reimburse. So we will continue to have these discussions, um, in the next week or two, although we are making rapid progress toward the finish line. So the next item is the first-floor traffic court. Um, I attached an eligibility memo that Wood O'Brien's prepared based on a request from the County Manager's Office. It essentially would move out the county treasurer's space and turn the first-floor space into, uh, traffic court. And that estimated cost is six-hundred-forty-six thousand, eight-hundred-forty-eight dollars. And so I don't know if Tom or Tanya would like to speak to that, um, or if there's any questions, but I think this is something that's been discussed for several months, and we now have the eligibility analysis from Wood O'Brien's that says it's an acceptable use of CARES funding even though it's capital spending. The next item is EMS handheld monitoring kits. So these are kits that will allow, uh, EMS paramedics to measure oxygen saturation, carbon monoxide, and perfusion in the care of adult and pediatric patients. And so as we've all heard and learned with COVID-19, um, oxygen levels are a key indicator in how someone is faring with COVID-19. And so therefore, Wood O'Brien's has deemed these to be eligible expenses. The cost is estimated at fifty-one-thousand, three-hundred-fifteen dollars. And the final item that we would recommend is what Tim sent the note about last night, and I believe maybe this follows up on the conversation that you had, uh, with Dr. Minz, Commissioner Dennis. And that is to recommend approval of three-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars for ten-thousand units of an antigen test. So based on conversations with Dr. Minz and Adrian Burn, our Health Department Director, now is the time to add a limited amount of antigen testing as part of the ongoing COVID-19 testing plan. The state has provided some such tests to long-care, uh, long-term care facilities, uh, but doesn't have enough. And in addition, some schools have received antigen testing supplies, uh, but the state has provided samples to only a few schools as a pilot. So having these testing supplies available could allow the Health Department to work with other schools, and it may allow the Health Department to react quickly to cluster events. So with that, those are the four items. Uh, I would ask you to consider approving us moving forward with those expenses.
Thank you, Lindsey. Um, Commissioner Howell has a question.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. So on the Treasurer's Office, where, where are they planning to relocate the folks that are down there now? Where are they going to be?
I will defer to the County Manager on that.
Thank you, Commissioner, for asking that question, because I did want to commend, uh, Treasurer Kozier and her staff for working with us on this issue. Uh, to answer your question directly, we will, uh, move about half of her staff over to the Douglas and Meridian, um, office. There is some open office space over there. Uh, she will leave a contingency of staff behind on the first floor, we will remodel, uh, around that and give her some workstations on the first floor. So to answer your question, she, we're kind of splitting it for right now, until a more permanent solution comes down the pike, hopefully in the future.
So to be clear, that, so to be, to be clear, the six-hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars, that's for renovations on the first floor of this building?
Yes, sir.
Has nothing to do with the vacation of the traffic court currently, or the prepared, prepared spaces for that staff at the, at the, uh, tag office over on Douglas?
That is, uh, that's, I know it does not include anything for the tag office on Douglas, so I'm on a technical, I'm looking at Tanya on, I believe it is correct, only the first floor, remodeling.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. Uh, the amount that, uh, Lindsey mentioned is for construction, architectural and, and engineering fees, permits, and plan review.
Okay, so do we have estimates on what we're going to spend on the traffic court here in this building, or on the preparation of places over there at the Douglas Tag Office?
Uh, okay, uh, help me understand what you mean by the traffic court.
Well, we're, we're relocating some, some functions in this building to the first floor.
Right.
So we're going to vacate that space, I assume, for other court-related functions?
Correct.
So do we have estimates on what that's going to cost at this point?
To whatever is going to be reused in that area?
Correct.
No, I don't have an estimate on that, and we don't have any cost at this moment on what it's going to take to move. I think we're moving over approximately nine, uh, employees over to the Douglas, uh, Tag Office. So at this point, I don't have, uh, estimates on that. We're working through that. We're meeting with, uh, John Marshall and movers, uh, this week to find out what those costs will be.
And then also, do you have a timeline on how long this will take to convert the first floor to the traffic court, uh, system?
I don't at this point. Uh, we continue to work with our, um, architect, Justin Graham, with Schaefer Johnson, Cox and Frye, um, but I don't at this point. Uh, we're trying to work through this just as quickly as we can, um, but at this point, I don't have an estimate.
And so to use CARES funds, we will, I assume, will make the payment on the front end of this pretty quickly. We have to expand this by December the thirtieth, so this will be expanded out of the CARES funds, even though some of the planning for this is not going to be done for a while?
I believe it has to be allocated, right? That, that has, it has to be spent, or it has to be?
So the work actually has to be completed by twelve-thirty.
Okay.
And then we have a, uh, basically ninety days to pay invoices. So what we would intend to do is, based on whatever feedback, uh, Tanya and her team receive, on how that work will be done, we will pay in increments as we go, um, and basically pay for the design and the architecture, and as much as we possibly can for whatever work is completed by twelve-thirty.
Okay. Well, that's a pretty, that's a pretty daunting challenge, and so, uh, I'm glad we're talking about this today, not later than today. Thank you for the, thank you for the answers to my questions, appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
If I can just add to on that, Commissioners, we are going to work with, um, our on-call contractors, uh, just to accelerate this just as much as we can, uh, for this project, so.
Thank you.
Thought maybe she stole my talking points. I have to chase her down. So I'm happy to address any other questions you may have, otherwise I would recommend that you approve these four spending requests.
Okay. Chairman Meitzner, do you have any questions regarding this?
No, thank you for the explanation, Lindsey, and appreciate the questions.
Okay. Um, I don't see any other questions or comments, Commissioners. I'll make a motion to approve, um, the recommended action of, um, the four items, um, as proposed by Lindsey.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay, and you have me for two more items. So the next one is simply a discussion and, and getting feedback from the commission on the discussion that started yesterday related to childcare, daycare, remote learning-type solutions. So we did have an opportunity to talk with Wood O'Brien's. Again, they are eligibility consultant. And so, of course, one of the big pushes right now is, what do we have time to do, um, correctly, um, but also communicating to them that maybe there was a little bit more risk tolerance that we had in this program because of the community need. So maybe we were more willing to stand things up pretty quickly. So, uh, what we have learned, um, you heard obviously what Brent spoke about earlier, that the YMCA has a program that's already started. There is no concern about allowing them to use their current funding, those, that you allocated under the Public Health and Social Service model, um, to do that program. So that has essentially been, uh, blessed by county staff to proceed. Uh, the challenge that they are facing in making that, um, larger is the same challenge that we're hearing about as we continue to talk about other options, and that is staffing. Trying to find staffing right now, um, to stand up a program so quickly for only two weeks is significant. So one of the recommendations that came from Wood O'Brien's is to try and use current staff, current county departments, um, to, or, or entities that we have management agreements with, to try and utilize those to stand up a program, because that eliminates the need to have to do an RFP, which is how we create an even playing field, how we allow people to come in and say, we can offer a service. We don't necessarily have time to do that process or to do it well. So that was the, Wood O'Brien's recommendation, that we could do that and stand it up pretty quickly. So I know Tim Kaufman has been in conversations, uh, with Exploration Place, they're currently offering a remote learning program already, um, and so one of the ideas, uh, is to potentially have, uh, Exploration Place continue to do that with their State Spark funding grant, but then perhaps set up an additional program or grow that program using counties' CARES funding and just pay for the different staff, um, because that could make that easier. I do understand from Tim, staffing is a concern on that side as well. Um, but there are also talks about potentially trying to use the arena. Unfortunately, with the challenges that the arena's facing, uh, with event cancellations, the NCAA moving, um, you know, they are, they are not able to use their facility fully at this time. And so if there's space, obvious, there, obviously there would be plenty of space to spread out in a facility that large, but it's a matter of understanding whether there's capacity and ability to bring staff onboard so quickly, um, get technology, uh, and get all of the infrastructure and logistics in place. And so that would be one recommendation. Also, I know, as Tom mentioned yesterday, uh, there's discussions about what maybe the zoo could offer. So what we think might be a solution, because what we don't want to wait to do is have you tell us next Wednesday, uh, what to do, is perhaps you direct staff today to establish a program and authorize up to one million dollars of the testing portion of the spending plan to be used. Again, the whole purpose behind your testing program was to try and keep businesses open and to try and keep people at work. And so this would be essentially the same fundamental purpose, and so we think that that's an appropriate use. Right now, even with the four, full, full four million that has been allocated toward WSU's use, we are still only just under ten million dollars in terms of actual spending on testing. We do anticipate some additional costs coming down the pike, but certainly not the rest of the ten million, uh, that the commission had allocated in the spending plan. And so we feel comfortable that there is ample authority there to give staff some, uh, latitude to try and work, to try and have something stood up hopefully by next Monday. So, um, that would be my recommendation if you all would like to pursue a program like this. Um, and I'm also happy to ask, uh, Tim to come to the podium if he has any updates. He does not have any updates, so he'll stay there. So I guess at this point, I, that is what I have, uh, to share, and I would ask the commission for discussion and direction.
Thank you, Lindsey. Commissioner Dennis?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I appreciate you looking into it. Uh, if it comes to a vote, I will vote to oppose that, uh, recommendation, and I'll explain why. Uh, the school districts are the ultimate, uh, group of, of, part of government that is responsible, uh, for teaching our children. For example, USD two-five-nine, which has kind of precipitated this crisis just within the last day. Uh, I think their budget is somewhere around three-quarters of a billion dollars a year, much higher than what our budget is. They have an elected board that is responsible for taking care of our students. They have hundreds of buildings spread across, uh, this county. So far, uh, it appears to me that, uh, that they are stuck in their own paradigm of education. And they need to move out of that paradigm of education and find out what is good for our students at this point in time, and how that they can serve our students to the best of their ability. Uh, for us to take this on, who are not educators, uh, who are not responsible for the education of our students, uh, who do live within all of the framework and, and requirements of an education system, I think is absolutely wrong. Uh, I, I believe that we need to go back to the school districts and say, what are your plans? Because the ones that are most hurt from this are the low-income parents, the single families, the, as Commissioner Cruz said, the, the females are most impacted by this. I don't know that it's a solution that we can come up with that's going to serve the community well, because it, we're getting out of our lane of traffic, and we're getting into the lane of traffic of education. And so, uh, if, if it comes to a vote, I, I don't believe it should come to a vote to move a million dollars from testing, because testing, as I said in my last comments, is what's going to help us get out of this if we can use it in order to be able to get people back in school and people back at work. I believe that it's important, right now, uh, for us to work with the, uh, the other elected officials that are elected to do this, to find out if there's a solution that they can help, uh, get our kids back in school, or find another way, uh, that we can help those that don't have the childcare, that don't have the ability to, uh, take off from work. Because the last thing I want to hear about, uh, in the world is that a single mother that has to work has a seven-year-old, uh, kindergartner, first grader at home by themselves. And so I, I, I just want to make sure that we send that message to the, all of the Boards of Education, that that's what's happening. And it's their responsibility, not ours, to take a look at what can be done, uh, to get past this crisis. That's my comment, uh, and that's why I would not support any kind of motion to move a million dollars. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would echo the comments of Commissioner Dennis. I think he's exactly right. The money set aside for testing ideally would be used for keeping people in the workplace and in the, in the school system as much as possible. It's interesting that we started this discussion using the term childcare. I, I don't think that's, we don't normally think of our schools as childcare, because I don't think that's what, that's not fair. They're there to educate our children. But it is, this is a unique problem, because now we've got children that have no place to be unless the parents stay home and watch them personally, or pay for someone to watch those children. It's a, it's a, it's a very, very difficult challenge. And, of course, education is the priority, but also health and safety of our, of our education system and the students and the, and the teachers there also have to be a priority. Um, I, I think, I don't know if the other Commissioners received this email, but I did receive the, I think it was this morning from someone, I won't read the name, but the person says, they live in District Two, and, and the person, uh, says they have a solution for the kids not going to school. There are many paras, some pair of teachers, bus drivers, and other teachers still wanting to work, needing to work. Why not utilize the school buildings? Keep everything remote. Beg those that can stay home to stay home, and bring in an army of help, and use CARES money to pay them a wage. I mean, we have tons of space in gymnasiums and cafeterias and the Wi-Fi works. I'm not sure exactly how all that would work, but space is not really the problem. It is social distancing, which is maybe the bigger problem, and there is obviously a loss of some staff. I think the number I heard yesterday in our staff meeting was about sixteen percent of their school staff are out on quarantine. That means there's eighty-four percent still available to be used for, at least, managing the health and safety and, and space logistics of these children in the school system. And schools are uniquely designed for health and safety, fire protection, all kinds of things that you need to have, a safe, safe, uh, environment for these children. The staff, I believe, are, are background checked, for example. I don't think you can replace that quickly. So I understand the challenge. Uh, I, 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 I sympathize with those that are struggling right now, trying to find a solution, but I think the solution starts with the schools. They have the spaces, they have a lot of staff who are uniquely qualified, the spaces are uniquely qualified. We should start with that. I would add education as much as possible. Those that can go home, that may be a great part of the solution, but those that need to be at the school, we should allow them to be at the school, and we can manage them better in that facility with the people we have. And education, uh, we, we should add that as much as possible, obviously, but I think that the solution is at the school, not at the YMCA, not at the zoo, not at Exploration Place. It's at the schools, it's actually at the school facility. So I will not support a proposal to stand up a something different, I think the solution is there. If the schools need some support from our CARES funds, let them propose a solution to us. I would love to hear that idea from them. Thank you.
Commissioner Glasscock?
So my fear, if the, the schools have advocated their responsibility to, to teach children during this period, just because they have changed their plans, I don't want to leave the kids, um, as a consequence of that action. Um, and so I, I mean, is there a way that county staff could arrange a call between us and the school district to talk about possible partnerships or solutions? And I agree with Commissioner Howell and Commissioner Dennis that, you know, the most appropriate place for this would be the schools, but then if the students are at the schools, then is it the staffing concern? Is it the social distancing concern? Why wouldn't be able to use those facilities? And I, you know, I would be open to using county facilities as well, if that's a concern of the school district. I would be open to using those facilities, but I think, is there a way that we could arrange a call between the school district and us to have this conversation with them?
Commissioner, absolutely. I spent about an hour on the phone last night with Superintendent, just talking about their situation. just talking about their situation. I think they would be, we've been good partners with the schools and vice versa. I think that we could easily arrange that.
Yeah. I mean, I think a good, you know, good example of us having that conversation is what, you know, the solution that was figured out with Wichita State. And hopefully we can figure out a similar solution with the school district. I think we all want the same objective, but I don't want our communities and our families, you know, left stranded because of a decision by the school board, and us just to be like, "Oh, it's not our responsibility." I want to make sure that we're still caring for the citizens at the same time. So if we could do that, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Chairman Meitzner?
Thank you. A question and then a comment. Lindsey, so this plan has kind of spelled out. How many students would it take care of? About?
I don't think we, I don't think we know. I think the YMCA was limited to...
Fifteen per group.
Fifteen per group. And so maybe there's two of those, so that would accomplish maybe 30 kids. So certainly not a grand scale. And then in terms of if we were able to stand something up and expand a program, I think the maximum we could even hope for, and this has not been discussed or firmed up, this is totally speculation, would be maybe 500. So it would be probably a drop in the bucket relative to the need.
Okay, yeah. I like what Dalton suggested as well. I think we should, we could help the schools for sure with the CARES money directly, so they can help solve this challenge. I don't know. Let me, this might be a good time to volunteer this. We're probably not on our agenda, is the vaccines rollout soon? I just want to make a quick comment, unless it's on the agenda.
It is not today, Chairman. It is not today.
Hey, Chairman, before we get to the vaccine, can I just address this topic?
Yes, yes, but please, the only reason about this, I want to suggest that. I had a call yesterday from Ron Sellers, who's the chair of Reno County, that's Hutchison area. Been working with him closely. They've come up with a platform that they want to, they're sending a letter, we're supposed to get a copy of it. The vaccine rollout is supposed to be the healthcare workers, and then the aging facilities, and then whatever else. And they feel, which I think is kind of interesting, that teachers should be vaccinated right after the health cares, because the teachers vaccinated has a huge economic impact on everything that we've just been talking about. So I'm just throwing that out there. We don't know what the vaccine rollout's going to look like for sure. But we may want to consider jumping on, having a teacher emphasis vaccination program right away to help secure a kid getting back in school. That's the only comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Lindsey, I have a couple of comments. How much is in our testing budget?
There's a total allocation of 20 million, of which 9.5 million has actually been allocated.
So 20 million.
Specifically allocated.
And 9.5 has been allocated. So that leaves about $10.5 million. So how much is, how much will be spent on testing? How much is allocated to, or projected to be spent?
Well, so we project at least another 2.5 million in outstanding invoices as of today. The commission also just approved the 350,000 for the antigen testing, and so that would then come against that. And then the rest of that funding would simply be either ramping up, coming up with a strategy if there's increased sampling through the Health Department or through other partners that State Spark won't cover, that would be an available use there. Or if there's some other strategy, certainly also if a vaccine becomes available, this would be the pot of money that we would want to go to to try and make that purchase. So that's why I'm not recommending that the commission completely deplete that bucket. I think we need to keep it at least around 15 million. But there would be some latitude, I think, just based on what I know today.
Okay. So from the increased amount, when you're talking about maybe adding additional expenses, we'll have roughly around $12 million with those added expenses. You say you want to keep it at 15, so that leaves about $3 million available. What happens to the other 5 million?
So that would be something that we'll talk about when we come to the spending plan. As Brent identified earlier, we do have some additional costs for safe operating grants, and we do have some additional costs for public health and social service awards. We do have some other buckets with funding, but we are looking at those comprehensively now. We're going through all of these final eligibility memos that are coming in, and I'm optimistic that we can have a final figure for you and suggest a revised spending plan next Wednesday.
Okay. So I guess the point that I'm trying to make is that we all know that women are going to bear the brunt of this. They are going to be the ones staying at home with their children. They are going to be the ones that are going to step out of the workforce and lose the progress that they've made thus far. So that's the point that I'm trying to make. I am a mother. I have a kid at home right now. This directly affects me. It affects those that I know. I have had many conversations yesterday with multiple women who are concerned with what they're going to do with their children. Some women in this community cannot afford to send their children to the YMCA. It is expensive. If you don't have any money, it's expensive. Some women don't have money to spend, to send their kids to Exploration Place. There's no money for some of these women to maintain a daycare facility, or have a safe place for their children to be while they have to go to work. So the fact that we have $5 million sitting in our account, that we wouldn't allocate at least 1 million, or 500,000, or $750,000, I believe is irresponsible. I do want us to talk with the school district, and I understand that they're in a very tough challenge. I believe that we are in a very tough challenge as well. So I think it's important that we understand who is really going to bear the brunt of this. But let's get back to the original question at hand, which was, what are our county staff going to do? What are we doing for our county staff? Because how many, how many of our county staff are, have children in school? Do we know the answer to that? How does this affect our county right now?
Commissioner, we asked that question last April and May, when the schools remoted initially. We re-asked it again in August and September. And Sheena's in a training today, so she's not available to be in the meeting. But I think she has good numbers on that. And we actually put survey out a couple of times, the latest being in August, September, as the school year rolled around, to be prepared for this. Clearly, of our almost 3,000 employees, many have kids, children. Not so many school-aged children, and not so many that K4 area. But it's significant. We asked the question, what can we do to facilitate and help. Organizationally, from the beginning of this, we have tried to be as flexible as we could managing our people, and give them time, and allow shift changes, or allow days-off changes, so that they could accommodate their family needs at home best we could. And that continues to today. I think we have good answers to your questions. I'm going to need my HR director to get that to the commission, so you can know what organizationally, how we stand. But we feel like many of our employees, in my discussion last night with the school superintendent, she was very clear with her parents from the beginning of school till now, that this day could come, that they would have to remote, and kept promoting, "Come up with Plan B. Come up with Plan B if, in case this day happens." And we've been doing that with our employees as well. And many people, many people have a Plan B, that in case this day comes, we'd have to go to that. I think that's how we feel organizationally. But I'll be glad to get you numbers, specific numbers, regard to the Sedgwick County organization, after the meeting, when I can talk with Ms. Muts.
Okay. I do have a couple more comments, but I believe Commissioner Glasscock has some comments.
Yeah, I just have, have we examined, you know, transportation concerns? And I'll be asking a lot of questions the next few weeks as well. But the transportation concerns of getting the students still to facilities when there isn't a busing, that would be one worry as well. If the parents are working, they may not be able to drop their students off there. So then do we need to look at transportation options to get students there as well? And then, you know, I feel more comfortable having this, you know, conversation or a vote after we talk to the school district, to understand, you know, their role in a way that we can partner together. And then also the selection process. I know that you had spoken that there could be only 500 of the 13,000 students. So how would we select those 500 students? And having friends that, you know, are teaching currently, you know, teaching first graders, or hear those horror stories of them trying to get kids to not cut their hair while, you know, they're teaching, or finding, you know, like a dead animal. And the distraction, they're already seeing that parents are not home currently. I know this is a pressing problem in our community, and we need to figure out a solution. I feel more comfortable after we talk to the school district about ways to partner. So again, I'll be asking a lot of questions, but my two main ones in that are transportation concerns, but then also the selection process and how students will be selected for that. I imagine it's a first-come, first-served, but...
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just remind me, please, Lindsey, how much money do we allocate already for schools and out of the CARES funds from Sedgwick County?
They've received 5 million total.
5 million. And do you remember?
And they have received 100% of that funding.
But that's not, that's not USD 259. That's the total.
Right, that's everybody.
So what did USD 259 receive?
I have other questions as well.
Well, and if you want to ask that question, will I look up that information? That might be good.
I was going to make the point. This is, this is, this challenge is actually not unique to 259. We have 10 school districts that are headquartered in Sedgwick County, and 20 school districts that come into Sedgwick County. I don't know how many students, I'm sure Commissioner Dennis knows how many students we actually have in the county altogether. 50,000 to 259, but what's the total number of students in Sedgwick County? That's the number I had written down, about 80,000 students. You know, I'm certainly not against, well, let me say, I don't think we're going to return this money back to the federal government because we don't have a place to put it. Is that fair?
No, we will, I assure you, we will have a strategy for you.
I think we'll have a strategy. So I think this money will all, every dollar will find a home before we return any money back to the federal government. So I'm pretty sure about that. Once again, I would like to ask the school systems to propose something to us on how we might best use this money to help them help solve this problem. I'm not suggesting that we don't want to help them with solving the problem. I think we should help them. But to stand up, sand up something quickly in the community away from the school system, in my opinion, is, logistically, I'll say it's nearly impossible. The schools have to be part of the solution here. I understand they're, they have challenges, especially with staff. But they have the places, the spaces. They have a lot of staff that are still available. So if they need additional support to help solve this problem, I think that's what we need to hear. I don't know how to solve that. If we talked about $3 million added to the 5 million we've already granted out to those school districts, that would go a long ways, I think, in being able to, you know, help find additional staff to help watch the children, educate the children in the school system. I don't know exactly how they'll do that, but I think that they can do it. And I think that they're better at this than we are. I would like to see them, I appreciate what Dalton, Commissioner Glasscock said a minute ago. We ought to be including them in this discussion. I think they're critical to solving this. We can't solve it without them. And so I appreciate your comment, Commissioner Glasscock, and I'm not against spending the money to help solve it. I don't want, I don't want to see any part of our population impacted unfairly. I think everyone is struggling with this. This is not unique to any particular type of person, or even unique to 259. It's across the entire county. So I'd like to see the school superintendents be part of our conversation. Thank you.
Is it okay if I follow up on that requested information? Okay. So we have a total of 92,605 students who were counted in the districts and private schools, who received the 5 million. The Wichita School District of that 5 million received 2 million, excuse me, $2,179,396.
Thank you for that. You know, yesterday, I had multiple conversations with women who are trying desperately to find something to do with their children. And I'll tell you, when you put us in a position, we're going to find a solution. And there are already women in this community who are finding solutions to take care of their children, but they need the right resources to do it, because they don't have the resources to do it. And so, you know, when, you know, to quote Commissioner Howell, he says, "Every bit of this money will find a home." Well, I believe that it's prudent to help the children in this community, and I think that it is absolutely important to show that we are supportive. And that means using that money that we've received from the federal government to help the children in this community. That's exactly what we're doing. And so with that, whether it gets a second or not, I'm going to make a motion to allocate 1 million dollars to help with daycare funding in this community.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I make a substitute motion. We would allocate 2 million dollars to our school systems. Don't thank...
Excuse me. I would like to make a substitute motion.
Did Commissioner Cruz's motion get a second?
It did not.
Okay. You don't make a substitute motion?
No, I need to make, thank you for the clarification. I would like to make, again...
As long as it's sure that there wasn't a second on that motion.
I'd be glad to wait and see if there's a second. Okay.
I don't believe there's a second. Motion fails for lack of a second.
Yeah, I think, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We would allocate 2 million dollars from our current testing allocation, reallocate that money to our, to our school systems, asking them to help find solutions to manage these children through the, yes, ma'am. Help me with the word.
Sorry. Well, actually, I have a clarification. Are you wanting to distribute it equally across all of the school districts, or just those that are in remote learning?
I'm waiting for them to provide some information back to us. I'd like to allocate the 2 million dollars to this problem.
Okay.
How it's dispensed, I think we need to hear from them.
Okay.
But I think that the problem is a real problem. I would like the schools to lead on this. I'm asking them to tell us how they can use this money to help solve this problem. But I'd like to see 2 million dollars set aside for that purpose. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Is that good enough to make, say, "I make that motion"? Is that clear enough?
I think if you can say, "Allocate the funding and direct staff..."
Okay.
"...to come back with a proposal maybe next Wednesday," that would give us the direction we need to.
Very good. I would, I'd like to make a motion. We would allocate 2 million dollars and direct staff to make a recommendation back to us on how we can use our schools to help solve this problem. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. I will second the motion so that we can move forward. But I want to make clear that we need to work with the school districts to solve this problem. And I have no problem with helping the school districts solve the problem, but as I said before, we need to stay in our own lane, and the school district's lane is to take care of the students. If we can use funding to help them do that, I am all for that. So that's the reason I would second the motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Glasscock?
I know we had made, the motion had said a week from today. My concern is that the schools are only going to be doing this remote learning period for, you know, maybe three weeks. Is there a way that we can maybe have a special meeting prior to that to be able to address that concern?
We can, Commissioner. I think there's two, as I'm listening to this. The commission has a decision to make. If this motion carries, we could do a special meeting, or you could, if we meet with the schools and come up with a plan, you could authorize that amount of money, go toward that solution, and we could report that back to you. It's a question of what, how, and I think when we have that discussion, I'm thinking through Commissioner Glasscock's recommendation on a school discussion, I see that as a component of staffs, plus some elected from this body and the school board, would have that conversation, and have this discussion, and reach this partnership. So the commission could authorize the money. And if that group, if that subgroup comes up with a viable plan that could be implemented immediately, because I think time is of the essence on this.
Would I need to make that a substitute motion to Commissioner Howell's motion, or is that just?
Can we amend it? Just amend the motion to include that?
I will invite him to do whatever he thinks is best. Both options are great. Amend it or substitute is fine, either way.
I would amend if you take a friendly amendment.
Yes, please.
What are you amending it to? State that for the record, please.
Commissioner, Mr. Stoltz, would you be able to rephrase that? You said it perfectly. I'm not going to be able to say it again.
Well, I think the commission has two choices. Either we do a special meeting after the compromise with schools is reached. You're all crystal clear that we need to communicate to school district. I see that as the superintendent, a couple of their electeds, and a couple of our electeds, and that now we hash this out. If that group reaches a compromise, the commission could disauthorize today up to 2 million be spent on whatever that plan is, and trust that group to go forward, so we could immediately implement. Either way. So special meeting, or give this group the authority to spend up to 2 million.
I would prefer a special meeting for the sake of making sure that it meets, you know, our understanding of, you know, daycare services specifically for women or men, single fathers in our community that wouldn't have the opportunity to do that. So I would prefer a special meeting just to make sure that they meet the specifications, if that is accepted.
If I may... If I may, I believe under the circumstances, this is very timely. I would support allocating the money under the guise that we make sure, we, we have the spending plan come back to us. So kind of like we did with WSU, we allocated the money and then we had to approve their plan. So I think that if we could do that, we can allocate the money, and then we approve the plan, but go ahead and allocate the money today, schedule the meeting with the school boards or a school, and then figure out how the money is spent from there. Is that?
In special meeting.
In a special meeting, correct. Yes. Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Oh, thank you. But in the interest of time, I, I don't know that we need a special meeting. If we allocate the money, we know where it's going, and we trust our staff. And the quickest way of getting something done is to use the staff to work. The slowest way of getting anything done is get the commission involved. So I, I don't know if I would support the, the alternate way of doing things because I, I think that if we're, if it's timely, and it is something that needs to be done right away, the quickest way we can do it is tell our staff, when you've got your marching orders, go out and figure out a way of doing this with the school districts. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would agree with Commissioner Dennis. I, I think that if we allocate the funds, knowing exactly where it's going to go and the purpose of that, I think that this, the conversation that Manager Stoltz will, will convene with, with people that you select, and sure, Lindsay will be involved in that as well at some point. I think we, I trust them to make the right decision, and that money will be used for this purpose. I don't think I need to get into the details exactly how it's divided out. I, I trust the staff to make that decision. So I would agree with Commissioner Dennis on that. It's, I think making the allocations are an important thing today. That's really the, the crux of my, of my motion, is just allocate the funds and get it moving as quickly as possible. And if that was ready to go today, I'd be, I would support that for this, you know, this afternoon if we could do it. So.
So we're giving discretion to our staff, which is what I believe I'm hearing, for clarification's sake, $2 million for school districts, to allocate it for remote learning, for those kinds of things. There's a motion on the floor. No further discussion. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Motion passes. I believe, Lindsay, you have one more summary for us.
I do. I'm sorry. I'll go quickly. So the final item is the same thing you hear every week, and that is your COVID spending status. And so Commissioner Glasscock, for your information, we will talk about not just CARES funding, but every penny we have spent toward COVID in our organization on this item. So, and this will just be a receive and file. So to date, our organization has spent $52,706,86 dollars on COVID spending. I just want to emphasize that again. $53 million since March. So for non-CARES COVID spending, we are, we remain at about 1.4 million in the county's general fund. Much of that has to do with expenses that we weren't sure if they would be eligible under CARES, and so we will continue to undergo review for those. If they are, we'll reimburse for CARES. If not, we'll seek FEMA relief if we can. We remain at $36,000 in the fire general fund. That's up just a bit from the last time we spoke due to payroll. And then we remain at $58,000 from the coronavirus emergency supplemental fund that we spent early on related to cleaning services in correctional and sheriff facilities. So then let's shift to CARES. So this is the direct county allocation. We have spent of that direct county allocation or allocated for spending $43,461,249. Of that, $33,276,511 has been used to direct, or I'm sorry, to support direct county spending. So of that, we're up about 5.2 million from last week, the last time we spoke. A good chunk of that, $4 million, is because we actually went in and entered the shopping cart in our system for WSU. And we're just drawing that down as we make those payments. We also had to increase a shopping cart for the temporary employment services related to the health department by $700,000. We expect that that will get us through year end. We spent another $125,000 on FF-CRA leave. That is the highest amount we've had. Just as a reminder, FF-CRA leave is for emergency paid sick leave. That's two weeks under specific circumstances where someone's either ill or caring for someone who's ill, and that is paid at the full rate of pay. This also includes the emergency family medical leave. That is for student, or for employees whose children may be in remote learning opportunities, and so they have the opportunity to earn 2/3 of their rate of pay for up to 10 weeks. And so that $125,000 is for a two-week pay period, and so that's pretty significant. We do expect that to increase with the recent news about remote learning for USD 259. We are up another $87,000 for personnel that's not related to FF-CRA. So those are temporary positions that are on our staffing table, not through a temporary staffing agency. $63,000 for the AEDs that you approved a few weeks ago. $56,000 for Galagio that you approved last week, which is that technology solution for EMS through ERP. We approved, or I'm sorry, we spent another $36,000 to get Microsoft licenses for the new health department positions that you authorized. Another $15,000 on miscellaneous PPE, everything from gloves to gowns to head coverings. And then we had a number of other miscellaneous costs for utilities, cleaning, medical professional services, client isolation, operating supplies, signage and such, but I'm not going to subject you to those individual amounts. So then shifting to the county's direct allocation that we are using to support external agencies. Of that, we have spent $10,184,738. That's up just a bit from last week. A good chunk of that was because we have now started processing vendor payments on behalf of the African American Council of Elders. We'll start to see these increases go up fairly significantly. As Brent referenced, cities are now submitting their monthly reports with documentation for reimbursement, so they're going to be able to access that second pot of funding that they were not advance funded. So we started with $99,636,917. We are down that 43.5 million. So as of today, we have $56,175,668 remaining. Again, I will remind all of us that the spending plan does plan for every one of those dollars somehow. A large part of that is personnel, and as you can see, we pay that out over payroll. We still have two payrolls when we will pay that out. We also still have some of those costs that we're paying out for public health, social service, cities, and our other projects. So then looking at Spark spending, again, we got 9.3 million from the state of Kansas related to impact funding because we did have the highest unemployment rate in the state at the time this funding was awarded. So all of that was invested toward business. We are up to $7,382,986 of spending there. We have processed 901 safe operating grant payments for about $4.4 million. And as Brent told you, we are on track to spend roughly $7.7 million. And so we expect that to continue over the next week or two as those are reviewed and deemed eligible. And of course, we spent the full $3 million on PPE kits, and workforce development are also, those grantees are submitting their information now. For CARES HAVA, again, this is the money that the Secretary of State awarded. The election office spent $417,676 of their allocation, and I was advised two days ago that that check has actually come from the Secretary of State's office. So we have been fully reimbursed for those expenses, which is fantastic news. And then finally, though not related to CARES, it does relate to COVID-19, the Center for Tech and Civic Life Grant of $816,458. Of that, to date, $593,687 has been committed. We continue to work with the elections office to try and shift that additional $2 of pay out of their payroll and the general fund and into this, and so we'll have some updates on that. But Commissioner, Election Commissioner Lehman has advised that there is a possible extension that has been offered if needed, if those costs continue into next year. So I have taken up enough of your time. That's all I have. I recommend you receive and file. If you have questions, I can answer.
Thank you, Lindsay. I don't see any questions. Motion to receive and file.
Second.
It's been a motion in a second. Madam Chair or Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Did you want to take a second?
I do.
Okay. It looks like we are going to need a recess for five minutes. Motion to take a recess? Oh, we don't need a motion. Okay. Motion to recess for five minutes. We will return at, let's just say, 11:30. We'll take eight minutes. Chair.
Will you just say, you said you're more pure after?
Thank you, and welcome back to the meeting. It looks like next up on the agenda, Madam Clerk?
Item F, adoption of the 2021 Sedgwick County Legislative Platform.
Mr. Papoon?
Madam Chair, Mike Papoon, County Counselor. Akeem Ashford, our Communications Director, originally was planning to present the proposed platform for 2021, but as you know, could not be present here today. But I believe he's listening in and can participate by telephone if you need to ask him questions. So I'll go ahead and present the platform. Just as a little background, you know, this is a process we go through every year and adopt a platform about this time of the year to give the legislators in Sedgwick County and South Central delegation an idea of the issues that are important to Sedgwick County and our region. We have had several meetings to discuss various platform issues. We've gotten input from a number of county departments and elected officials for issues that are important to them. We met last, at a staff meeting on November 17th, and then a county commission meeting on November 18th. I've tried to go back and listen to those meetings, address some of the concerns that were raised by commissioners, and Akeem and I came up with this draft. It's before you did day. And I'd be happy to go through it point by point if the commissioner would like, or we can simply start amending it or deleting items or adopt it, however you want to handle this. And I know Commissioner Glasscock hasn't had as much familiarity with this platform as the rest of you, and he may have some questions, but I'll be happy to answer any of the questions that we have. Our priority items are the same items that were pretty much adopted by the board at our last meeting, one through five. And then we have a number of items we're calling supporting legislative issues of importance for the county, so.
Thank you, Mr. Papoon. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I want to thank our legal department and Akeem for all the work that they've done on this. We've met several times. I just read through to make sure that the recommended changes that we had in the last meeting were incorporated in this, and it looks like each and every one of them were incorporated. So at the appropriate time, I'm ready to vote that we move forward with the proposed platform for Sedgwick County. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Glasscock?
I just have one quick comment, just having a few moments to review the platform. And I think, you know, all are great items, but I specifically want to think as item number one, being specifically for mental health and behavioral health in Sedgwick County as the number one priority. I don't know if these are listed as party number one, two, and three, but I think it's very fitting to have that and multiple levels for criminal justice reform as well. So very supportive of both of those items, especially, particularly number one.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment and a question. Is it our intention that we're going to have some type of a minimized brochure to hand out to legislators that will have just primarily things listed on page one here?
And Akeem may want to address this if he heard the question. I know that he's been working with Tony on developing different formats, and I've seen various formats that they've come up with. I think this commission has, some of the commissioners have raised a concern that we don't, we have too much information that really is not needed on this and need more platform information. But I know Tony's worked up several palm cards or very, very brief brochures that can either have all of this information on them or just have our priority issues, and that's really, we can just...
Mike?
Yes, go ahead.
My commissioners, I am here, Akeem Ashford, Communication Director. So we do have two different versions with your input that we've created, but again, I'm sorry that I'm not there to kind of present those to you all today, but we do have those and could present those next week if you wish.
I guess I just want to say I'd like to see that at some point before they go to print. I'd be glad to have a chance to review that. Years past, we've been kind of rushed at this point of the year, and we didn't really have a chance to see what was going to print. So I think it's good for us to understand the format. And again, as a former legislator, my recommendation is to minimize the product, minimize the information, prioritize the things that we put on that card so they can be handed out readily and often through the legislative session. I think this overall is a good document, so my comment would be, I don't think anybody gets all the things they want, and this is a compromise for everyone. This has been a good process again this year. Appreciate staff working with us individually and in staff meetings and previous Board of County Commission meetings. We've, we have had a lot of debate, a lot of discussion. I don't think this is, this represents the complete support of any commissioner, but I think it's a good compromise between all the different priorities that we've identified through the process, and so appreciate having the chance to vote on this today and I plan to support it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Howell. Chairman Meitzner, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I reread it, and it does appear that the language adjustments have been consistent with what our last couple of meetings were about. You know, a small example, I think, is like loan forgiveness. I think it was smart of us to advocate for loan forgiveness for all local health departments, not just ours, things like that. I'm pleased with the final picture. So I'm ready to support a motion to approve this in its entirety.
Thank you, Chairman Meitzner. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you. Sorry for the, another question here, but I thought we had a statement we were making regarding other, regarding other partnerships or support for other organizations like the City of Wichita. Is that still part of this, or is that not part of this?
Yeah, I think, oh, I know, that's still going to be a part of this whenever we hand out and part of our platform. I'm not sure the City of Wichita has gotten to their priority issues yet to give us one of their priority issues. I know we've gotten some information from the chamber, the area chamber relating to transportation issues that will combine with our issue, but in getting back to Commissioner Glasscock's comment, I think we list as our priority issue on our joint issue with our other partners, our concern about behavioral health and mental health. So that probably is the top priority on our platform.
Thank you for that clarification, so I expect we'll probably see that in the next, as soon as it's ready, we'll need to adopt that as well.
I would hope maybe next week when Akeem wants to present the various formats that he has.
Okay.
And I will say in response to your earlier question, we have been up against, up against it in several years trying to get that format put together. But Akeem and Tony and their staff have worked great to get this stuff ahead of time. I mean, they've got some nice formatting already completed, and I think we'll have it done very soon, so.
And then, I guess finally, I would hope that in the process of going forward, we would quickly identify model language and points of contact at the legislature, whether it be our own staff, our lobbyists, or legislators that would carry the water. I'd like to identify legislation and get that ideally prefilled before their session begins, get that actually in black and white, and start moving those ideas forward if possible. So the legislative process begins, and it's not too early for us to start talking to our legislative friends and to start drafting that language and getting it moving forward.
We certainly have the language for the nuisance abatement authority number two and charter commission already prepared in bill form. I think in talking with our lobbyist, Jason Watkins, they don't, I'm not sure they use the same prefiling process they've done in the past. I'll check with them, but if we can prefile, we will. If not, we'll have it ready for the first day of the session.
What I mean by that normally is they've got a huge pile of stuff read into the record on the first day of session, and that's usually what happens. But for example, on the tax, there's an item on page two here, property tax bill. I think we need to, we need to review what was, what was passed last year and find the problems with that. We need to be working on the recommended changes on the dates, for example. Right now, as this is currently worded, it's not clear exactly what we're asking for, but I think we can, we can clean that up and probably have a bill drafted so that on day one, hopefully there's something that we're pushing into the tax committees on day one. That's the only way to be successful, really. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Howell, and commissioners for your comments. You know, I'm not really concerned so much as what the rack card is going to look like or really what's even on it, because at the end of the day, it's about developing relationships with legislators. It's about advocacy in their face for these items. It's about follow-through of the conversations that you had, and it's also about attending those committee meetings or subcommittee meetings when those happen. And so I hope that we are given ample time, as much time as possible, to attend the meetings that happen or at least have a, have a good understanding of who's sitting and making these decisions. So that's really what I'm after. I believe that a rack card is absolutely definitely important, but the most important thing is advocacy in person, is follow-through of all of these issues. And so that's why I am, I'm supportive of this, and we'll make a motion to adopt our Sedgwick County Platform for 2021.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll. Commissioner Glasscock?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, consent agenda.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Tom Stolz, County Manager, recommend approval of consent items G through Q this morning.
Motion to approve items G through Q.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. I don't see any discussion. Madam Clerk, call the roll. Commissioner Glasscock?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please. Legislative issues. I think we've covered that. Papoon, do you have anything to add?
I think I've pretty much got it.
Okay. Okay. And next item?
Other.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Briefly, I want to congratulate Derby for the 6A championship in football this year. I want to congratulate Andale for their championship this year, and I want to congratulate Northwest High School for playing in the finals. Unfortunately, they did not win, but just being there, one of the top two teams in the state is a testament to their dedication to football. So I'm sorry if I stole some of Commissioner Howell's on Derby, but this has been a very tough year for those kids, and they came through, and I appreciate exactly what they did, because at the beginning of the year, we weren't sure if there was going to even be a season, and now we got to the end of it, and those teams can celebrate. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for those comments. Commissioner Dennis? Commissioner Glasscock?
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure if this is the appropriate time to say it, but I believe it is. I just wanted to say, I'm looking forward to the opportunity to serve. Today's been a good, you know, push into this arena, but I appreciate, and I just want to commend the county staff thus far, has been incredible. And for all the citizens of Sedgwick County, we're very fortunate to have the staff that we do. They had me ready to go day one and have been very helpful throughout this entire process as well. I'm looking forward to serving. Thank you to my fellow commissioners for the conversations I've had with each one of you over the past two days, and then also to County Manager Stoltz, and then County Counselor Papoon, and everybody else that has helped in this process. I'm looking forward to serving for 40 days. I know I'm in a unique position, completing the term of one individual while waiting for another individual take, and I recognize that, and looking forward to serving the citizens of Sedgwick County District Two for the remaining, I think, 39 days I have. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Glasscock. We're excited that you're here. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to follow up with what Commissioner Dennis said. I would be remiss if I did not congratulate the city, City of Derby, the people who live in Derby, and especially the school system. I would call this the Super Bowl of our state. To watch the high school, the big teams of our state come together is always a lot of fun, and Derby had a 20-year dry spell where they didn't do as good as they're doing right now, and they're, they're amazing right now. They're unstoppable practically. They've had a year after year after year, they've now won the state championship. It's been fun to watch, and I want to just congratulate the team, the Derby High School, and want to say thank you to Coach Brandon Clark for his good work to the, to the community. So with that, that's all I, that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Meitzner, do you have anything to add?
Yes, just if I can, if I can share some sobering news this morning. Today, this morning, it'll be in the news, I'm sure, that we lost the passing of Frank Carney, who with him and his brother Dan founded Pizza Hut and created incredible value for our community worldwide. And I just, my sympathy to Frank, I know he's had a tough last few years in his family, and he was a fantastic person, and Dan is still with us, and my heartfelt condolences to Dan and all the Carney family. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Meitzner. So on a different note, a happy note, I would like to just really thank the City Council for passing of the 316 building that will be turned into housing for those in our community who may be experiencing homelessness. This project is really a good turning point. This is, this is about housing. This is not about more homeless shelters. This is about helping people focus on long-term outcomes. I don't know if you've heard about this, but I would appreciate, and I'm excited that people understand the full concept of what we're trying to do. The biggest point is taking people off of the streets and getting them in a place where they can build their lives so that they can become productive members of our society and help maybe take others off the street in the future. They also received a million-dollar grant for crime reduction that will hopefully turn this neighborhood around. The idea is to beautify and create a place that everyone can enjoy and hopefully revitalize the Broadway Corridor so that investment, private and public partnerships can happen. So I'm just, I'm very thankful for the partners who worked diligently to make this happen, Humankind Ministries, Via Christi, the COC, Latasha Santorino, and specifically Councilwoman and Vice Mayor Claycombe. She put a lot of energy and effort into this, and I'm very thankful for her leadership. And so if you have any questions or concerns, I know that we have talked, I spoke with the Midtown neighborhood, and hopefully in the future, this is just one, one avenue of revitalizing the area so that everyone can enjoy and be a part of the solution to ending homelessness, ending mental health, excuse me, ending the stigma around getting mental health help and reducing suicide rates. This is, this is a really great thing for our community, and I hope that we can all understand that. With that, next up, Madam Clerk. Executive session. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 15 minutes until 12:05 for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real estate and for the purpose of potentially relocating county departments, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from, well, we will remain in this room for, from executive session at 12:05.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. We will return at 12:05. Move to recess. Second, I second his motion. Excuse me, it's usually me doing that. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Glasscock?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
We will recess. Be back at 12:05.
Is this warming up, or do I have to power?
Speed reader.
Hello and welcome back. We returned from executive session. No action was taken. Uh, Mr. Papoon?
Yes, Commissioners, I would request that the Commission consider an off-agenda item for the purpose of discussing a real estate purchase agreement with iThrive Health, LLC, for the purchase of the Rivers, former Riverside Hospital Building, 2625 West Central.
Motion for an off-agenda item for a real estate purchase agreement?
Second.
Madam Clerk, there's been a motion and a second. Please call the roll. Commissioner Glasscock?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Yes, Commissioners, I've handed out to each one of you a copy of the proposed real estate purchase agreement signed by the, by the sellers. This is an agreement that would, for $4.1 million, purchase the former Riverside Hospital Building at 2622 West Central. Uh, and that is attached as Exhibit A, the exact legal description on the contract. As I mentioned, the purchase price would be $4.1 million. We were required to come up with a $25,000 earnest money deposit, which was deposited with Security First Title, who's the escrow agent. We have a 90-day due diligence period in which to inspect this property to determine if this property fits the needs of the county. And it's written into the contract that if the buyer, which would be said to be county, is not satisfied for any reason at buyer's sole discretion, or otherwise elects to not acquire the property, then buyer will have the right to terminate this agreement by giving them written notice and will be entitled to full refund of this security deposit. So we have a very liberal provision here in allowing the county to get out of this contract if, in fact, this doesn't meet our needs. Uh, this has all the other standard real estate provisions. I don't know that we need to really get into the, those details. Um, but if it's the will of the Commission to go ahead and purchase this property, I'd request that there be a motion to authorize the Chairman to sign this, this agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Papoon. I cannot see Chairman Meitzner, so I'm going to kick it to him to see if he has any questions or comments. Chairman Meitzner?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. The, uh, we've had a lot of work on this, and I think with the due diligence, this is, this is not a, a decision taken lightly. And I think it's a really potential fantastic positive move for our, for our current situation and far into the future. So I'm very supportive. I'm glad to make the motion, or I'll defer for other comments.
Thank you, Chairman. I believe Commissioner Howell has a comment? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of comments. Um, I've actually been part of this discussion going on, going back to 2015. I, I don't know if the problem was identified before 2015 or not, but that's as long as I've been engaged in this discussion. We've had multiple, uh, ideas floating around since then. And so the fact that we're moving forward-